All right, HGTV, you can go ahead and count us in.
Okay, coming live in three, two, one.
All right, good afternoon and welcome everybody to the August tenth, twenty twenty, regular meeting of the Hillsborough County City County Planning Commission. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participate participation are encouraged. To minimize feedback in the audio, all participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning commissioners should unmute themselves and turn on their cameras to indicate they would like to speak. You can also send the chat to Melissa if you would prefer to be recognized that way. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will also be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. Please click the raised hand button illustrated on the screen, and you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to these time limits, to the time limit, sorry. Members of the public may also ask questions to staff at any time during the meeting by typing them into the questions chat box illustrated on the lower right of the screen. If anyone has any difficulties or is watching this via HGHTV and would like to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, please call telephone number eight one three, two seven three, three seven, seven four, extension three five nine. Again, that's eight one three, two seven three, three seven, seven four, extension three five nine. For action items, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a fifteen minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation also with a fifteen minute time limit. Following the presentations, member of the members of the public may address the planning commission when recognized by the chair. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three minute period for rebuttal or response. Planning commissioners will ask questions. Public comment will be closed thereupon, a motion, a second, and a discussion, a vote will be taken. With that introduction, I will ask Commissioner Doughty to lead us in the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. All rise, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity of meeting together today in unity, to be of service and to take action on behalf of our community. Help us to be service to society and to serve all who live in this community. Restow upon us strength for our burdens, wisdom for our responsibilities, and insight to meet the demands of this day. Amen.
Amen.
The pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Doughty. With that, I will ask the clerk to please call roll.
Good afternoon, Joseph.
Here.
Bernstein.
Here.
Carl Dennis. Dix.
Here.
Doughty.
Here.
Green.
Present.
Cress.
Here.
Marino.
Here.
Powell.
Here.
Dickerson.
This is Matt Pleasant, filling in for Amber.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Thank you. You have a call.
Thank you. The next item up is the approval of the minutes for the following past meetings. The public hearing for Temple Terrace Plan Amendments, July thirteenth, twenty twenty, public hearing for Plant City Plan Amendments, July thirteenth, twenty twenty, and public hearing for County Plan Amendments, July thirteenth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion to approve the minutes in those meetings?
Mr. Chairman Allen, so moved.
As Commissioner Dix, I believe, made the motion.
Yes, correct.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, that's a motion by Commissioner Dix, a second by Commissioner Doughty. Is there any more discussion on the item? Seeing that, I will ask the clerk to go ahead and take a roll call vote, please.
Joseph.
Aye.
Bernstein.
Aye.
Dix.
Aye.
Doughty.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Cress.
Yes.
Marino.
Aye.
Powell.
Yes. This is Giovanni. I am here.
Mr. Carl Dennis, we're taking your votes on the minutes. Is it you're voting yes?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, next item up on the agenda is public input. If there is anyone, if there is anyone joining us today who wishes to provide comments on items that are not on the agenda or agenda items that are not for action, please go ahead and click the raise hand button at this time to be recognized. You'll be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait for the chair to call on you to begin speaking and state your name at the beginning of your comments. You will have three minutes. I am not seeing any hands raised on my side. Just want to make sure with Melissa and Lionel that you guys don't see anything raised on your ends.
No raised hands.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we will move on to the next order of business, the briefing for the City of Temple Terrace Plan Amendments, TTCPA twenty dash three by Mr. Mark Hudson.
Mark, you are muted.
Yeah, sorry about that. Mark Hudson, planning commission staff, can you hear me now? And can you see my screen as well? We are processing a plan amendment for the city of plants, excuse me, City of Temple Terrace. We have one plan amendment to process for them this cycle. It's TTCPA twenty dash oh three. This shows you the location of the plan amendment in question. It is just north of Temple Terrace Highway, just west of North Seventy-Eight Street. The property is currently owned by Florida College. It is the Terrace Hill Golf Course, and they wish to redevelop this area as a single-family detached neighborhood. Most of the property already has residential four plan category to allow that development, but there are several areas that they want to bring in that are shown circled by the lavender dash line. Three pods generally, one is the commercial and the other two are public semi-public. Now, one thing I want to point out with this aerial in front of you right now is we did get an app, a request from the applicant to make their plan amendment smaller than what was originally applied, and I will hope you can see my cursor. This little pod here, they have requested to remove that from the plan amendment. So when I bring this back to you next month and show you the graphics, that will no longer be included. And I'll give you an idea of what the impact that will be as I go through my presentation. This is a privately initiated, small scale. It was four point seven eight acres with that reduction. When I come back next month, it'll be three point four one acres. The properties that remain will currently have a commercial and a public semi-public designation, and they've requested to add this to the parent parcel with a residential four plan category, which allows four dwelling units per acre. This shows you the future land use map as it stands today. You can see the beige color of the residential four. The plan amendment areas are circled in the black dash line. Red represents commercial, blue represents the public semi-public for the Florida College. And if this is approved ultimately by Temple Terrace City Council, this is how the map would change. Again, I will point out with the cursor that this particular area will be removed from the plan amendment application, and therefore the land use will not be affected by this plan amendment. So what is the potential? Currently, the properties have entitlements of over a hundred thousand square feet of commercial and public semi-public uses. That, based on the old acreage, would allow, if it were approved by Temple Terrace City Council, allowed nineteen dwelling units. Based on the impact of reducing the overall size of the application, that would actually be reduced to thirteen dwelling units, and this slide will be updated for your consideration on, in the month of September when we come back for the hearing. And with that, I would entertain any questions you have, and look forward to seeing you back again on September fourteenth for the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I think a couple of us have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Green, sorry, my mic was off. Commissioner Green, you're recognized.
Thank you. Mark, I just had a question about, this is a little sliver of land, and of course, I can see it, it's meant to be a consol, part of that larger consolidated parcel, but what are the dimensions on this? I mean, is it, is this sort of leftover from something, or?
These are, we have received legal description on this and also JS files to allow us to map it properly. I don't know the exact dimensions other than the total acreage, which will now be three point four one acres in its entirety being these two pods that I'm circling with the cursor right now. And again, this one will no longer, that I'm circling now will no longer be part. They're bringing those in not only for access to the site, but also to get the unit count that they desire. At the next meeting, I can give you the ultimate unit count for the whole development. I believe it's in the hundred and forty to hundred and fifty, single-family detached units. And of course, most of that is already on the lands that today make up the Terrace Hill Golf Course that already have the land use designation of residential four.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Dix, do you also have some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just one. Mark, since we're, you know, be seeking a determination here, consistency. Is there any concern at all about the one southern piece there that dips down into the commercial area? So you'd have that one long strip you know, uninterrupted at this point of commercial, and then it would become that R four right there in the middle of it?
Yes, that is actually what they envision, and they're working on their plan development design as we speak. That would be the entrance into the neighborhood, and it will bifurcate that remaining commercial area. I will say that both those areas that will, would continue to have commercial entitlements that are both to the, to the east and the west, that would be the main entrance into the neighborhood from Temple Terrace Highway. There'll be another ancillary entrance from North Seventy-Eight Street, but that's the thought that that would be the boulevard that someone who resided or wanted to visit that new neighborhood would actually go from Temple Terrace Highway using that, that entrance into the neighborhood.
Got it, thanks.
Right, were there any more questions or comments on this item from commissioners? Nope, all right. Thank you, Mr. Hudson. We will move on to the next item, number four, another briefing on City of Plant City Amendments, PCCPA twenty zero zero five and twenty zero zero six. Again, Mr. Hudson.
Again, this is Mark Hudson, planning commission staff. Can you see my screen still?
Yes.
We are processing two plan amendments for the city of Plant City. As the chairman just noted, it's PCCPA twenty oh five and PCC, PCCPA twenty oh six. The first is located up near the interchange of Park Road and Interstate Four in that commercial corridor. To be more specific, it's east of North Park Road, north of Interstate Four, west of North Water Road, and south of East Sam Allen Road. It is just north of a major commercial activity center that's been identified on Plant City's vision map. This is an arrow showing actually if the affected area is surrounded by the lavender dashed line. Again, you see to the north, East Sam Allen Road, and to the west, North Park Road, and to the east, North Water Road. By way of a little bit of background, this is privately initiated. It is also a pending voluntary annexation, so that process is going forward as well. Ultimately, it will require a plan development rezoning for the property as well. It is just over twenty acres, so it is a regular scale and will require to be transmitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity before final consideration by the Plant City Commission. Today, it has a Hillsborough County Residential One land use category, and the applicant has requested Plant City Commercial. This shows you the site as the land use stands today. You can see the commercial corridor that is already identified in Plant City, south of Sam Allen Road and north of the interstate. If some of you may be familiar with Stingray Chevrolet, which is a little bit off this graphic, but to the south, but as you go between Tampa and Orlando, it's something that stands out that you may have a little bit of a reference point for. And this shows you how the land use would change if the ultimate plan amendment was approved by the city commission. The applicant's desire is to develop not only this property, but the property to the west in its entirety for a new major medical facility, and they are working towards that through this voluntary annexation, land use change, and ultimately developing the PD that will govern the overall development pattern for this parcel. So what are the potential impacts? You can see the properties today have, are in a rural plan category in the county. Could be developed for twenty, twenty dwelling units, perhaps thirty thousand square feet of commercial office uses. That would increase, increase slightly with for the dwelling units if that was their desire to actually do so. However, they do want to develop this as a major medical facility, and the theoretical entitlements for the parcels in question would increase to over three hundred thousand square feet. Give you a little bit idea of the schedule that we're operating under. Of course, we're going to be bringing this back to you on September fourteenth with our recommendation from staff. The Plant City meetings and hearings are tentative right now, and as they get closer, the adjacent programs will be notified by direct mailings. But we're tentatively scheduled the planning board to be heard before them on September twenty third. The transmittal city commission meeting on October twenty sixth, and we would project that the adoption hearing for consideration would be sometime in January of twenty twenty one. And with that, that concludes my presentation on the briefing. There is no action required, and I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for the presentation. Are there any questions from commissioners? I see no one's cameras on, no hands. I'm gonna assume there are none. Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for the presentation, and we will be moving on with that to our next agenda item, item number five.
I have one more plan amendment to just briefly go over, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry about that. Did you go over?
I just gave you a little bit break in there in case anyone, before I went into the next one, if anyone had questions on this one.
Okay, so sorry about that. Go ahead with those six. Thank you.
The next plan amendment, again, similar to the last one, is a pending voluntary annexation. This shows you the location again on the vision map. It's a north of Sparkman Road, west of Jap Tucker Road, south of Jim Johnson Road, and east of the CSX railroad tracks. It's known as PCCPA twenty oh six. This shows you an arrow, the site. It's surrounded by the lavender dashed line. The development pattern around this area is predominantly in agricultural and rural residential development. You can see the municipal boundaries in the blue dashed line. On the western side is the Walden Woods DRI, and as I show you the land use map, you'll see this has predominantly been developed out with industrial uses with some recreation, open space designations, but it is separated by the railroad tracks by CSX transportation. Again, it's privately initiated, twenty eight point seven six acres, so similar to the last one, it'll be required to be transmitted at the DEO before the city commission can take final action. Like the last one, it's Hillsborough County Residential One is its current future land use designation. However, in this case, they've asked for suburban residential plan category, Plant City Residential Four, which is allows up to four dwelling units per acre, and also does not allow any consideration of commercial development. This shows you the future land use plan categories it stands today. You see the light green, which is the Hillsborough County Residential One plan category. The, the property would have access by Jap Tucker Road. To the west is the, again, the CSX railroad tracks, and on the other side, you see the gray industrial area for the City of Plant City's the Walden Woods DRI. Some uses that are very nearby is Plant City's police station is very near to this location, located in that industrial park. And you can also see the recreation, open space designation further to the south, again, both in Walden Woods. And this shows you the beige or yellow color of Plant City Residential Four, that was ultimately approved by the city commission. Today, in the county, it has the potential for twenty eight dwelling units. Of course, those would be developed on, on well and septic. The city requires utility to be provided if it was developed under their municipality's guidelines, and that would increase based on residence four to a hundred and fifteen dwelling units. This plan amendment has the same timeline as the previous one. I would just note again, these are tentative dates based on how the city determines if their meetings are going to be virtual or in person, and also whether they are going to hold the, the meetings actually at City Hall or at a remote location that offers better spacing between participants. But in any case, these are the tentative dates, and as they become closer, everyone will be noticed either through legal advertisements in the paper or direct mailings for those within two hundred and fifty feet. This, I put this slide in here just to give you an idea of how the two plan amendments are located in context to each other. You can see one up is in the north eastern portion of the community, and the other is in the southeastern quadrant. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and again, look forward to presenting both of these to you on September fourteenth.
Thank you, Mr. Hudson, great presentation. Are there any comments on or questions from commissioners on twenty dash oh six? All right, seeing no cameras or hands. Well, thank you again, Mr. Hudson, and we will move on to our next item. Item number five is an action item, and it, it will be Hillsborough County, four year twenty one, four year through four year twenty five Capital Improvement Program and Capital Improvements Element Schedule of Projects presented by Mr. Diego Guerra.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Diego Guerra, planning commission staff. This is the planning commission's review of the Hillsborough County's Capital Improvement Program and Capital Improvement Element Schedule of Projects update. This is an action item, and a resolution is provided for your vote. The review was conducted in accordance with chapter ninety seven, three fifty one, which authorizes and requires the planning commission to conduct an annual review of the county CIP. Chapter one sixty-three of Florida statutes requires the schedule of projects or list of projects addressing levels of service and adopted in the comprehensive plan be updated on an annual basis. The update will replace the existing capital improvement element schedule with the schedule in your packets, and the update is accomplished by ordinance. As such, planning commission staff also conducted a review of the schedule of projects. The review is examined, the capital improvement program and the capital improvement element schedule for consistency with the Hillsborough County comprehensive plan, as well as the plans of adjacent jurisdictions. Displayed as a summary of the capital improvement program projects which are placed into eight program areas. As depicted on the slide, the largest groups in terms of funding are transportation and water enterprises. The total funding amount for FY twenty one through FY twenty five is one point four seven billion dollars for two hundred forty seven projects. Planning commission staff looked at the overall CIP and those projects identified by the county to address levels of service. As you can see, eighty-four percent of the funding is going towards a hundred sixty-one projects that address levels of service, while sixteen percent of the funding is going towards eighty-six non-CIE schedule, scheduled projects. The first step in reviewing the CIP and CIE schedule for consistency was to take a look at the projects identified by the county as addressing levels of service and see how the CIE schedule compared to those priorities outlining the capital improvement element. CIE policy one point eight point two states funding should first be expended on projects that maintain levels of service and eliminate existing deficiencies before expanding funding on projects that serve future growth. As you can see, combined eighty-nine percent of CIE funds are slated for projects that either eliminate deficiencies or maintain levels of service, and only approximately eleven percent of the funding is being used on projects that serve future growth. So utilizing geospatial data, planning commission staff looked at all the projects to ensure consistency with related future land use element policies pertaining to the urban service area. Ninety-eight percent of the funding is for projects within the urban service area. Projects in the rural area include replacement and renovation of existing facilities, parks, and trails. None of these projects would encourage growth or sprawl in the rural area, and no water or sewer lines are planned for the rural area, which is supported by future land use element objectives, one policies, one point one, and four point seven. Capital improvement element and coastal management element objectives state that public expenditure for infrastructure and facilities in the coastal hazard area should be minimized with. This being said, planning commission staff utilized GIS to analyze all the projects with available geospatial data to determine the proximity to the coastal high hazard area. Planning commission staff found that eleven projects were within the coastal hazard area. These projects serve existing development, renovate, replace existing facilities, or enhance public access to natural areas. This would be considered minimal construction and ensure the county property and expenditure is not subject to unnecessary risk. Therefore, the CIP is consistent with the coastal management element and the capital improvement element objectives governing the coastal hazard area. Staff recommends the planning commission find the county administrators recommended FY twenty one through FY twenty five Capital Improvements Program and Capital Improvements Element Schedule of project, projects consistent with the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan and transmit comments and observations to Hillsborough County. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, this concludes my presentation. Myself and county staff are available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Guerra, great presentation. Are there any hands? I don't see any hands raised on my end. Second with Melissa, make sure you didn't receive anything from anybody directly. Nope, all right. Commissioners, I see Commissioner Powell, you're recognized, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe this is better, I'm not sure for Diego and Melissa, but one of the projects that I was hoping to see on the, at least on the, on the solid waste, I'm not sure if it falls under this program, is the upsizing or the extension of the sewage pipes in Gibsonton. That area, you know, going from just where the, oh, gosh, trying to think, but the Super Walmart really all the way down to, you know, to forty-one, you know, that line there for the majority of that entire stretch of road in Gibsonton Drive, it's a four inch, you know, solid waste main there, and there's no ability to develop anything around there because of that sewage pipe. It's at, it's over capacity. And I know that in previous years, that was on the capital improvements list, and then it's been taken off and added back on, and you know, I don't know, is that something that we have the ability to, you know, ask, you know, staff to look at putting on there, or is it just, hey, the county administrator, you know, decides on, on these projects, and we're just kind of go with the flow?
Um, well, Commissioner, I, I don't know that that's something, I would say, yes, it is the county administrators and her staff's determination, what are the priorities and that they have the resources for. It does appear that in the attendees list, Mark Marinette from the county staff is in attendance, and I don't know if we could see, hate to put him on the spot, but perhaps he would have an answer as And I don't know if we could see, hate to put him on the spot, but perhaps he would have an answer as to why the priority is changed. On that specific item.
Um, great.
Mark, Mark is self-muted and he's free to unmute himself so he can answer. Mark Marinette, may I unmute yourself?
Alright, I'm sorry, I had to find the right place there to do it. Excuse me, sir, you're asking again for the, um. Something in the Gibsonton area?
Yeah, so there is a, uh, the, the sewer, uh, the sewer pipe there, there's a, a four-inch pipe. That, uh, goes, uh, from the new Circle K that was, uh, recently built there where the Super Walmart is. And running west towards forty-one. Um, in, and I think that's on the opposite side of the, of the Walmart, so I think that's the south side. Um, it could be the north side, I'm sorry, but either way, um, you know, that sewage pipe there has been at. Um, the maximum capacity for, I don't know how long, because I've been trying, I had a client who had some property there for a really long time. And the only reason why they were not able to ever do any sort of, you know, development with it at all. Uh, was because of sewage pipe, um, there, it's, it's a four-inch and it's just been at maximum capacity. And I know at one point, uh, we had, uh, someone who was willing to purchase our property and some adjoining property to do. Some higher density, you know, projects, uh, on there and. And this was four years ago, maybe or three. And the only, uh, plan that the county could put together was to, uh, extend the service line. All the way from that location, bore underneath, uh, seventy-five. Go all the way down to three oh one and then go south to Sims and do a connection. That was like. Almost a two million dollar project back then for a developer to, you know, to make that project viable. That was what we had gotten back. You know, at that time. Um, and then since then, some other options were, uh, you know, given to, uh, my client at the time. And he doesn't own this property anymore, thank God, but, um. And then it was, oh, well, let's just run the, uh, you know, someone can upsize, you know, the pipe. Uh, and run it all the way down from the site down to where the new Circle K is and, you know, but that, that was going to cost about one hundred thousand dollars. But. I, within that span of time, you know, we had been in contact with, uh, you know, county staff and it was on the. Capital Improvements Project, uh, list, uh, and it was approved, but it was never funded, memory serves me correct. Uh, for that pipe, um, you know, to, to get upsized and that's really the, the most critical piece. To that whole area, um, for any future, you know, land development over there and in density. And I think that Gibsonton has really been overlooked for a really long period of time, for whatever reason. And it needs to, that needs to happen, and I just don't know why it's not happening, like, you know, what does someone, what are the folks in? In Gibsonton done to deserve this, but, uh, I think that, that, that needs to get solved quick.
Okay, yeah, and I apologize, I'm not personally involved in the prioritization process in the Public Utilities Department. I'd have to contact them. Uh, to ask about that, to have them get back to you unless you already have a contact in the Public Utilities Department. Okay. Okay, yeah, because I was looking through the CIP here, the one item is the Gibsonton Area Septic to Sewer Conversion Program. And that doesn't cover what you're talking about, then there's also something in the Palm River Utility Expansion Septic to Sewer. Uh, but I don't think that goes, that's not far enough south for what you're talking about, so. Yeah.
This would be right on Gibsonton, you know, drive itself.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Mark. Um, I would add two, two things, Commissioner, one. Later this evening, um, the one water amendment. There is a policy that we're proposing that calls. Existing low-pressure sewer systems, private franchise water and wastewater systems and individual wells. To county utilities where operationally and financially feasible within the urban service area. So that is a policy direction that our, um, update of the county's comprehensive plan will be including. That that is important to be making those conversions and bringing the lines to those areas inside the urban circle area that don't have them. Um, I would also offer that, uh, in tonight's discussion. Some of the public utilities staff are, are planning to be a part of that meeting. And might be able to answer your question more directly about how the, the funding priorities have been set.
Okay, alright, great. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell.
And then this is Mark again from Management Budget, just real quick then, so you'll, you'll take that avenue first, see if there's somebody can answer the question this evening. Out of Mr. Cassidy or whoever's going to be there, uh, but if not, Ms., Ms. Ornith, will you please, uh, contact me then and I can follow up on that if need be?
Yes, absolutely.
Alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Martinet. Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Uh, were there any more commissioners who wanted to make any more comments or had any more questions about this item? Or we close comments and go to, uh, motion? Nope, alright. Well, I will close public comments and I will. Open the floor up for motions from the commissioners on this item.
Uh, Mr. Chair, this is Steve Bernstein.
Yes, Commissioner Bernstein.
I would move that we, uh, support the resolution finding that recommended fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-five CIP. And the corresponding CIE scheduled projects are consistent with the future Hillsborough Comprehensive Plan.
Motion by Commissioner Bernstein, a second by Commissioner Dix. Do I have any more discussion from any of my commissioners, any questions? No? Alright, then I will ask the clerk to go on ahead and take a roll call vote, this item. Excuse me, Joseph?
Uh, aye.
Bernstein?
Aye.
Cardenas?
Aye.
Dix?
Aye.
Doughty?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Cress?
Yes.
Moreno?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero? Thank you. Alright. Now we will move on to our next item, which has a lot of parts, it looks like. Item number six, also an action item. Um, Hillsborough County Land Development Code Amendments, and we will start off with Land Development Code Amendment nineteen dash ten fifty-five. Accessory Dwelling Standards, Miss Yenika Mills.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mills, Plant Commission staff, I'm here to introduce you all, Mr. Israel Monsanto. Who will be reviewing with you all the first round of twenty-twenty Land Development Code Amendments. Um, there are seven items for you all to review and as well as make a vote on, uh, this afternoon. Um, without further ado, I'm going to introduce again, Mr. Israel Monsanto, who will review with you those seven. Uh, Land Development Code Amendments.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Israel Monsanto, Hillsborough County Development Services. Commissioners, I will be presenting the text amendments from round one. For the Land Development Code Amendments. Commissioners, as you may already know, that two text amendments were continued. At the first Board of County Commissioners public hearing last month. And those are twenty dash zero seven twenty-one pertaining to our argument on public testimony by a party of record. And twenty dash oh seven twenty-two Plan Development Plans' expiration periods. These two text amendments were, were continued to a future round and county staff. Will bring them back to you once we have a, a future, uh, scheduled round. We now have a total of seven text amendments for this round, and I will, I will provide a summary of each text. And then answer questions or your comments after you, uh, hear each of them, and then from there you will have to, uh, move a motion to, uh, vote. The first text amendment is LDC nineteen ten fifty-five, uh, accessory dwellings. The purpose for this text amendment is to revise accessory dwelling provision of the Land Development Code. This text amendment will regulate by minimum lot size, which is seven thousand square feet, allowed accessory dwellings on legal non-conforming lots. Accessory dwellings will be permitted on front yards placed at twice the depth of the front, front yard setback. The variances to this provision will not be allowed. Legal, again, legal non-conforming lots that meets all other requirements of the accessory dwelling standards will not need to file for variances. And accessory dwellers will be permitted now in all single-family residential districts, subject to all other standards of these sections. And Amabel, if you have questions?
Thank you. Are there any comments? I don't see any hands raised in the public, uh, Commissioners, are there any comments or questions on this item? Yes, LDC nineteen ten fifty-five, Commissioner Green, yes, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, um, I guess I have a, a comment and a question also, uh, I, I did see the, the. Um, the messages that, um, Ms. Ornithus said earlier, uh, the comments from, uh, uh, community members, let's say. Uh, about accessory dwelling units. I also have a, a question about the, the, um. Uh, the, the, the minimum size lot, uh, which, uh, I believe was seven thousand, indicated by seven thousand square feet. Um, and, um, how was that arrived at? Uh, because I do feel like a smaller lot size would, would, you know, could also accommodate, um, an accessory dwelling unit as well. As long as the size of the units are specified, and I'm assuming that will be in the Land Development Code, uh, criteria, uh, as well. And, um, and then the other question I have has to do with placement, um, on the property itself. And, um, I, I noticed that, um, it says accessory dwelling units, we, we would be permitted on front yards. Um, and I just have a question about why front yards?
Okay, so, I will start with the first in order for the minimum lot size. The minimum lot size of seven thousand square feet, it's, it says that's, that's permitted today. What's changing is that right now, there is a zoning district, which is the RSC nine, that has a minimum lot size of five thousand square feet. What was, what's changing is that instead of not allowing the accessory dwelling units in the RSC nine. The minimum lot size will be seven thousand, so if you have a seven thousand square feet in an RSC nine zoning district, you will be allowed to. Have an accessory dwelling as long as you meet other district standards, such as side yards and, and rear yards, et cetera. Um, the, 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 w- once you go smaller on a lot size. Then you have to think about the district setbacks, which in this case of the RSC nine, which is five thousand square feet, you have twenty feet. Front and rear, and then five feet on the sides, and also you have lot coverage, so the smaller the lot, the lots gets. The more restrictions you have to place the accessory dwelling units, which have to con- conform to setbacks, so. The seven thousand square feet would, is a size that would accommodate better. An accessory dwelling, which is nine hundred square feet, mean, um, a maximum. Um, and then going to the maximum square foot, and again, that's not changing. That, that's, we're not changing the minimum lot size to have an accessory dwelling. The, um, the, the, the size again of the accessory dwelling, that's not been changed either, is nine hundred square feet. Um, which is, uh, the, the maximum. Now, if you, if, if there is also provision in the code that you may go larger than that, but you also have to meet certain standards in. The size of the principal, uh, uh, dwelling unit. And again, that's not changing with this text amendment either. And with the front yard, you, right now, you could have a, an accessory dwelling in the front yard. What, what, what happens is that you have to meet principal district setbacks. Um, and you can get a variance if you don't meet that. With this text amendment, what's going to happen is that you not only, you will have to place the accessory dwelling twice. That would require front yard, so if your front yard is twenty-five feet, you have to place. The accessory dwelling at least fifty feet, and there is no variances now that would be allowed to go in front of the land clearing officer. To remove that requirement. So again, you can have, today, you could place a, an accessory dwelling between the road and the principal. Um, dwelling unit, as long as you meet the district standard, or what happens is that if you don't meet it, then you can go to the lujo and then. If you get approved, then you will have an accessory dwelling in front of the principal house on the, on the, on the, uh. Row, which is your front yard, but this text amendment will eliminate that, will have, will have, we have to require the twice the depth and also. No variances will be allowed to be filed to remove that requirement.
Okay, I, I, I guess I, I, I raised the question because, uh, because I'm, I'm thinking about community design standards, uh, in established neighborhoods. And, um, and whether or not this, you know, that, that allowance for a, um. Accessory dwelling unit to be placed in front of, in front of the principal structure. You know, would alter the character of, of established neighborhoods or blocks.
And, well, and again, if you will have to have a deep enough lot. To place the accessory dwelling twice, and that's, that's the intent, the intent is to avoid those situations where you have an accessory dwelling. Right, sitting in front of the house, and you will have to have a deep enough lot so you can place the accessory dwelling twice that distance. Um, on that lot, and you won't be able to ask for variances to put that accessory dwelling in front of the house. That's how the, the change has been written.
Okay, and the size, uh, maximum size of nine hundred square feet for an accessory dwelling unit? Um, that's, that's, that's pretty generous, uh, that's, that's approaching the, the size probably of some, some smaller, um, principal structures. Um, uh, in some, some, some areas, uh, um.
And that's not changing, that's not changing with this, with this text, uh, change, yeah.
Okay. Okay, alright, fine, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Uh, are there any other commissioners with any questions or any comments on this specific one, LDC nineteen as ten fifty-five? Nope. Alright, I will close public comment then, and I will open the floor up to entertain any. Motions from my commissioners on this one, LDC nineteen dash ten fifty-five? Commissioner Green?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'll move we, uh, we would find LDC nineteen ten dash fifty-five consistent, um. Uh, with the Hillsborough County, um, Comprehensive Plan.
You, Commissioner Green. Hi, Commissioner Cress, second? Alright, I have a motion by Commissioner Green, a second by Commissioner Cress. There is any other comments, questions, please state them now? Nope? Alright, I will ask the clerk to go ahead and call roll. Joseph?
Aye.
Bernstein?
Aye.
Cardenas?
Aye.
Dix?
Aye.
Doughty?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Cress?
Yes.
Moreno?
Aye.
Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero? Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Monsanto, for our next one.
Thank you.
Ms. Mills, whoever.
Israel Monsanto, again, Hillsborough County Development Services. Our next text amendment is with, uh, LDC twenty dash oh seven. Twenty wastewater connection in the urban service area. The purpose for this text amendment, Commissioners, is to require connection to a publicly owned and operated wastewater facility. For the subdivision of apparent parcel or lot of record in the urban service area. This will only allow subdivision of a parcel or lot of record in the urban service area if the newly created lots connect to the. To a, uh, owned and operated wastewater facility. Exceptions will be maintained to public potable water connections as permitted today in the Land Development Code, so that's. So that section is not being changed. I'm available if I have questions and/or comments.
You, Mr. Monsanto. I don't see any hands raised right now. Couple more seconds here, all right? Anything from the commissioners? I see Commissioner Green, Mr. Powell, a lot of action going on. Commissioner Green, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Israel, now, now, what exactly does this amendment do? I mean, is it making everybody connect to publicly owned wastewater facility in the urban, in the urban service area?
No, Commissioner, we, right now, if you have a pattern parcel or lot of record in the urban service area, let's say it's a certain size, one or two acres. And you have an applicant who wishes to split it in two or three, the code would allow to have those new created lots to have septic. They need to go to, to go to get variances to the land use hearing officer. With this text amendment, if, if that lot is in the urban service area, they will have to, if they want to create new lots, they will have to connect to a publicly owned and operated wastewater facility, and no septic will be allowed. Again, this is in urban service area locations.
And that's for all, any, all of those parcels that you're describing?
Right, parent parcel or lot of records, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner, was that all Commissioner Green?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is probably better from Alyssa. This seems like it may have some correlation with One Water that's upcoming. And I know that, trying to find it here, but there's, you know, a couple of sections that you do talk about the elimination of, you know, septic tanks, like within the urban service area, and allowing for, potentially for, like, I think, assistance to homeowners who are currently on septic systems to maybe get like some, some help or some aid to connect to public water connections and facilities. And I guess I, I have a whole, whole problem with forcing someone who is already right now on a septic system to have to connect to a, to, to public water if they're already on, you know, a septic. Like, I know there's a lot of situations where someone is, you know, inside the urban service area, but, and they may be 1,000, 2,000 feet from, you know, an actual, you know, line, which essentially would require that particular, you know, landowner to, they can't use a septic. So with One Water, would they then, would there be some sort of, like, financial support or, or credits or something to those type of, you know, owners, landowners, to, you know, be able to allow them to connect up to the water line? Because I know that's technically feasible, but that's not certainly economical. When you start having to dig, you know, more than a couple hundred feet, it gets really expensive.
Right, so, um, so I think what this language is getting at, and what we have made One Water consistent with, is that, so we're not necessarily addressing if somebody today has a piece of property and they have a septic tank. I do think it is in the county's desire to solely get those people off of septic tanks and connecting to water and sewer. But the programs and the cost of doing that is probably something that the utilities department folks would need to address. And, and they will be on the call this afternoon during the One Water public hearing. But what this is getting at is, so if I have a half acre in, in Brandon on septic tanks right now, and I want to split it into two lots, because in, technically, under my zoning, let's say I'm RSC 4, and I'm allowed to have quarter acre lots. So I could have two, two lots on that half acre. What it's saying is that before you make more lots, you need to connect. That new lot needs to connect to water and sewer. So what it's trying to do is, so there's the question of we've got some existing issue with people having septic tanks in the urban service area. What this is trying to do is curb the proliferation of that by not allowing new lots to be created on septic tanks. So this isn't directly addressing the issue of how is the county getting people to hook up? I think we can definitely have them answer that this evening. But what this is after is, we're not going to create a new lot with a new septic tank in the urban service area if, if that property was otherwise allowed to subdivide. That's my understanding of it, and I'm sure Israel will chime in and tell me if I'm misunderstanding it.
I think I understand that, you know, especially for Brandon. I kind of have that exact scenario that you depicted or described. I guess my concern comes is, and I've seen this happen, I've been involved in a transaction on, you know, in Sefner, where a client had, I think he had about a three or four acre, you know, piece of property. And then he ended up, you know, like subdividing it, and wasn't really a good property for potential development because it was 1,200 feet from a connection point. So they just decided to split the lots, and then they did, you know, the part of the code they were able to do with, like, the septic tanks. And they were, did that so that they could have family members, you know, build houses on there. But that situation, with this new text, you know, update, they would, someone would have to go and dig 1,200 feet, you know, and, and connect up. And if they wanted to subdivide, it's really, you know, it's feasible, but it's certainly not economical. And I don't think that that really would support the, you know, overall goals and objectives, you know, the comp plan, you know, in terms of, you know, trying to add density, you know, to, to land. So I, I don't know if I can really, and I'd like to hear some other commissioners, but I'm not sure if I can, if I'm on board with it as it's presented without some sort of metric to say, you know, well, and I get the, the, the spirit of it and why we want to do that. But for those who are, you know, outside, you know, inside the USA, but they are really long ways away from a connection point, I don't think that those people should be, you know, harmed. But I'm curious to hear other thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. I will, I see Commissioner Doughty up here. Are you going to grace us with some wisdom? You're recognized, sir.
I don't know if I'm going to grace you with some wisdom, but I'm going to go along with the same discussion that Commissioner Powell was there and, and, and use kind of similar example, I guess, that Mrs. Renita brought up. But, so I understand the, the philosophy behind it, to remove people from septic systems, connect everything to it. And, and, and there's a lot of, you know, septic to sewer conversions going on around to try to, you know, eliminate the nutrient contributions to groundwater, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. But again, and I think I would make a distinction, I guess, between someone who wanted to subdivide their property, and I'm using that term, you know, for development purposes, like a planned subdivision with no improvements, where you're taking a 20 acre piece of property and splitting it up into 10 or 15 lots to sell to other people, or to the situation like Commissioner Powell said, where, or you, Alyssa, where you had a, you know, a half acre piece of property or one acre piece of property, and you're going to split it into two, and you're going to basically give your kid a place to build a house. You know, it's, it's not just, I would agree with Commissioner Powell, that it's not just the cost of connecting the, the new home. And I'm not sure if this language would require both of them, both new home and the existing home to connect to a, to a county sewer system. But it's not just the cost of that connection. If I'm not mistaken, there are a bunch of other rules and regulations in, in the county's Land Development Code that says when you touch county right-of-way, which you would have to touch in order to put a sanitary sewer pipe in to connect to a forest main or whatever it is you're going to connect to. If you touch county right-of-way, you got to bring county right-of-way up to current standards. So how many roads in, in, in Brandon, let's just say, don't meet current standards, right? And so you're going to, you're going to, you're going to want a single-family homeowner that owns a half an acre lot to have to come up with a substantial sum of money in order to be able to provide a residence for another member of their family, you know, whether, whether it's a son, or whether it's a, you know, an aging parent, or, or what have you. So I, I'm just, I, I, the, the, the thought behind it is good, but I also think there ought to be, I guess there ought to be some exceptions that are still allowed in the language. That's where I'm coming from.
And I guess that would be a question for Israel, perhaps. What exceptions, if any, would still be available for county staff to, to look at the technical or financial feasibility of the connection?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, when we looked at it, there, there was, there is no specific exception. There is, though, a current, when you go to that section of the code, which is the 40203C exceptions. There is, let me see, I'm going through the test changes here. The, the exceptions will be maintained, like I said, only for the potable water. But once you, and again, you have to have, you have to be at least, you know, you have to be, when you are less than half acre, you have to connect regardless. But, but there is no exception right now, the way the, the changes are written. You will have to, if you, if you have the pattern parcel, lot of record, and you need to split it, you will have to provide a connection if it is feasible. You know, it is feasible, you have to connect. You divide it, you are a lot of record, pattern parcel, and you have to provide that connection to the wastewater system. I understand your, your comments. But that's the way it's, like, like Alyssa said, the intent is to avoid those connections, provision of septic in the urban service area for water quality and, and, and allow, and provide that connection to the system.
Have any more questions, Commissioner Doughty, or?
No, I mean, he's, he's answered my question. I can't say that I liked it, but he's answered my question.
Right, well, I see Commissioner Powell up on the screen now. I didn't know if you wanted to join in, maybe you had another question.
Yeah, oh, I, thank you, Mr. Chair. I did, when, when Israel, when you said, you know, you know, whether or not it's feasible, I guess I just, feasible to me sounds like doable, and, you know, with, with money, just about anything is doable. I mean, you know, you can spend $2 million to go run a sewer line somewhere. And I mean, it's feasible, but, you know, does Johnny homeowner, you know, have $2 million to put in a toilet is really a thing? And I just don't think it's, I just don't think it's fair, you know, to that requirement. And almost to me, it seems like the land use hearing officer is probably tired of hearing requests or variances, you know, to, to subdivide lots and add a third septic tank, you know, on a parcel split. When I was on the land use appeals board, that was, they came before us almost every meeting, you know, whether or not, you know, someone could do a third lot and put a septic on there. And so it seems like it's really, they're trying to almost mitigate that and not have to have that, you know, be a thing anymore. And maybe it's better variance requirements, or, or, you know, could really be achieved, you know, by that. But, yeah, I just, you know, still don't think it's right. And feasible is just not the right term there.
I mean, one thing that, you know, the, the intent also is that when you have these lots in the urban service area, and they are subdivided to increase the density, want to make sure that they are properly connected to wastewater, generally speaking. So again, I understand your, your comments, but urban service area, you, 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 you want to push for that connection to the wastewater facilities.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, hang, wait one moment, just, oh, Commissioner Powell's gone, so I guess it is on you now, Commissioner Green. Go ahead.
It, it, it sounds like this, this, there has to be some provisions for hardship situation. And, or, or some criteria that says, you know, for lots that are an acre or less, okay, maybe, maybe hardship provision will be considered, let's say. But for anything larger, clearly, that's, that's, you know, that's related to, to, to development. And, 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 and maybe the, you know, the, the provisions as this is, as this is written apply. But I'm not sure if that's, if that language is, is, is in there somewhere. But I think that's, that's probably more a, a fair way to, you know, to decide, okay, so when, you know, when, when should this provision really kick in based on the size of the property that's being subdivided? That's it, that's, that's my two cents.
You want a response from Mr. Monsanto, or did you just, were you okay with that, just making your statements?
I was just, I was just commenting, though. Yeah.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Green. I see Commissioner Dix on the line there. You're recognized, sir.
Well, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not certain whether we're to the point of discussing, discussing the matter or still asking questions. But, you know, I just want to point out that sometimes lofty, lofty goals and things we'd like to, like to see get in, in the way of practical situations. And, and this is just clearly one. There's, there's not a way in the world you could find this, as it's written, to be consistent with the plan, not for trying to add more density, et cetera. And, you know, I appreciate even, for example, Commissioner Green's trying to, you know, to say, well, we, we would, you know, make exceptions for small acreage. Well, I don't even know if you can, you know, limit it to one acre. I mean, some of these are just, would be absolutely ridiculous to write into the code to require someone to spend so much money to connect. Now, if we wanted to say that they had to connect when it was readily available, then that makes logical sense. But not just an open-ended, they have to connect when we have no idea to the extent of the task involved. And if anyone wants to make a motion to find this inconsistent, I certainly would support that motion.
All right, well, we're still in discussions just at the moment, but I'll mark you down here, Commissioner Dix, and come back to you. At, at that point in time, I see Commissioner Doughty back on the line here. Might have some more to add to this.
Well, no, actually, I was going to definitely agree with Commissioner Dix there that, that the, the exception to me, or the language should be to say, you know, yeah, you have to connect if, if, if the available service is, is, you know, if it's readily available. If there's a line that runs out in front of your property, you have to connect to it, but, but not to force you to have to build the infrastructure required to connect to that system. And so, I mean, I would go along with Commissioner Dix to either make or second the motion, but he's not.
All right. Thank you for that input. You look, you look like you had something to say, Alyssa, or wanted to say something there?
Well, I, I did, and, and I don't want to, I'm not wanting to disagree with any of the commissioners, per se. I just wanted to provide some context that this was direction from the Board of County Commissioners during our land use workshops earlier this year with them. They identified quite specifically that they wanted to develop a septic to sewer conversion program within the urban service area, that they wanted to, I'm trying to find it here as I'm scrolling through. But they, they had a number of places where they specifically said they wanted to have the standard be that in- they wanted to have the standard be that in the urban service area, you're connecting to water and sewer. So it is on that basis of the Board's direction that Development Services proceeded with creating this language. The current land development code does have requirements regarding looking at the cost of providing the service to, it states the cost to providing public water or wastewater service to the resulting parcels exceeds the cost defined by the technical manual feasibility criteria. So I think the current code contemplates the discussion that you have been having, and I think the Board of County Commissioners saw, at least the direction they gave, was that there is a problem with that continuing to proliferate in the urban service area and us getting, because on septic tank, you have to have a half acre lot size. So in that instance of, so you've got an acre, let's say, of property, and you want to split it in two, you can do that other half acre on a septic tank, but what we're not getting is the fact that under the land use category, it might have allowed two units or four units. We're underutilizing the land that is in the urban service area because we're proliferating half acre lots on septic tanks instead of encouraging them to do, connect to water and sewer, which if they're expending the cost to connect to water and sewer, they're going to do as many lots as they possibly can. So I think that is the direction in which the Board was trying to push it and is the direction in which we found it consistent with the comprehensive plan because of that encouragement of increasing density in the urban service area. But if you all have, you know, are uncomfortable with the mechanics of how it's being executed, certainly that I'm hearing that the cost factor for individual property owners still needs to be taken into account, and that would be something you all can, this is the appropriate forum to raise that. So I just wanted you all to have that context and understanding of both where the Board direction came from, but then also how staff viewed it in our consistency finding. Thank you.
Thank you for that insight there, Ms. Lornita. I see Commissioner Caress has been very patient, I will come to you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I was going to make a couple comments. One, I appreciate what Melissa just outlined for us, because I think back to that map we saw, I don't know, I have no concept of time anymore, but you all shared a map with us that showed the density that we were leaving on the table. So I think that this is absolutely a move in the right direction. I don't disagree with a lot of my colleagues who have expressed concern. I am on well and septic, I live in the city, surprisingly, the city of Tampa, and I remember when moving in 16 years ago and asking about the cost to get hooked up. It was quite exorbitant, but I could have split that with my neighbors, it would have been manageable, because I can tell you that we have spent thousands and thousands of dollars on our well and septic since then. So although it's a big upfront cost, I think in the long run, it would have paid for itself. So just personal experience I wanted to share.
Commissioner Caress, Commissioner Cardenas?
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to say that I work with all sorts of buyers, and sometimes they are buying in the 200, $300,000 range, sometimes lower, sometimes higher, and, you know, that would be an extreme cost for somebody buying in that range, and we have lots of properties that are in this situation. You know, I come across properties in septic all the time in Tampa. You know, they're, you know, it could be something that, you know, for a family, especially in today's climate, that is in a difficult situation, you know, you come in and you put this on top of them, that it could be pretty crippling. And, you know, over time, there have been cases, you know, throughout the country where commissions have planned stuff like this or have put individuals in situations like this, and it's, the result has been pretty bad for that, those cities and those towns because of what they, you know, the position that they put people in, so just a thought.
Thank you, Commissioner Cardenas. Commissioner Doughty, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I would just, Melissa mentioned the fact that the County Commission wanted to establish a septic sewer program, and I get the, again, the goal is a good goal. My understanding of all of the septic sewer programs in recent history that have been implemented, which are extremely expensive, a lot of them I've seen get, you know, get cooperative funding from the Water Management District, because the Water Management District is, you know, interested in reducing nitrogen loads, et cetera. Those, you know, the county and the Water Management District are spending 20, 40, 80 million dollars to construct the infrastructure needed to connect to these facilities, but the requirements for the residents are more along the lines of you don't have to connect today, but you're not going to replace your septic tank. When the time comes to replace your septic tank, you will have to connect. You, we would encourage you to connect today, but we're not going to put that unnecessary financial burden on you right now, but the next time that you're going to have to outlay dollars for your waste disposal, you're going to connect. And that's what I have heard, I mean, I don't want to put words in any of my other commissioners' mouths, but that's what I have heard from Commissioner Dix and Commissioner Powell, and that's what I'm saying, is that it's fine, but let's, there needs to be some additional language that provides options and says, hey, you know, you must connect when that system, you know, is readily and easily available to you out front, and whatever that language ends up might be. But again, I'm going to say that I can't support the current language.
Commissioner Doughty. Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's a question for Melissa. Can we actually table this and ask for a little bit more, some more explicit language along those lines that, you know, let's say clarifies this, or at the very least makes it more, I don't know, better understood, let's say, by people in different circumstances? I understand there's probably a lot of, a lot of different conditions, you know, people living on septic, but based on what Commissioner Doughty was describing and also what Commissioner Caress said, you know, maybe there's some additional language that, you know, says, okay, you know, there's, you know, here's, here's a, you know, here's a grandfather clause in here somewhere, and then here's, you know, here's another time-related clause that says, you know, once that septic tank needs to be replaced and it has, you know, you have to hook up, you know, that type of language, and I'm not sure if it's, if that's too explicit or what, but I think it will make this read a lot better and make it, and I know this won't serve the purposes of everybody in this situation, but I think it, you know, it will certainly help move this along.
I think my first question would be to Israel about when this is scheduled for a public hearing in front of the Board for a decision.
This is going to go to September 24th.
Okay, so there would potentially be another planning commission meeting on September, what date in September? Well, there's a September planning commission meeting on the second Monday, I don't know what the date is, right off the top of my head, but that would be before, it's the 14th, so that would be before the 24th. So if Israel, you would be amenable to us having some discussions around these concerns? We could table this and bring it back up at the next meeting to see if there is a way to continue moving forward with the Board's goal of having greater connection to water, well, to sewer specifically, not proliferating the septic tanks, but maybe giving some guidance as it relates to if there are any circumstances when that would be not feasible financially to a homeowner.
Right, I believe, you know, given the timeframe, we may have some lead time to discuss, further discuss, we'll have to take it back to staff and then probably bring it back to the planning commission before we go back to the county commissioners. So, yeah, you will have to let us know what will be your today's motion then, so we can then work from there.
Right, so I think, and Tracy may be getting ready to jump in on this, but I think maybe we would continue it to the next meeting?
Yes, it should be continued and not tabled. Continuance would be the right, that'll automatically put it on the next agenda.
Okay. Good. All right.
We would need a motion to that effect, and if you all wanted to articulate any specifics you want us to discuss with county staff, that would be helpful as well.
Right, so be thinking about that as I go to Commissioner Caress for her comments.
Yeah, just, especially if we are going to continue this, I want to make sure that we understand the full picture and the opportunity costs of not encouraging connections to septic environmentally, and when there are spills or whatever the negative repercussions are, you know, who pays for that? Is it the government that comes in and does that cleanup? So, you know, as a taxpayer, is that how I want to be spending my money, and a private homeowner could have done that? So just again, the opportunity costs and the full picture related to environmental impacts.
Thank you, Commissioner Caress. Commissioner Powell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was going to present a motion to continue, but if Commissioner Dix has some more input or questions, I can hold off or let him have that opportunity.
I appreciate that, Mr. Powell. Mr. Chairman, if I can just make one quick comment, I was just going after, after Mr. Powell presented, you were going to make the motion, I was in a second, and then I was in a comment about how strongly I feel about this. I mean, just a few minutes ago, we all voted unanimously and thought it was a wonderful idea to encourage and to make it easier for accessory dwelling units. Great idea. If you take the same analogy on this, as far as dividing a piece of property so that you could have, you know, a relative build a house next door to you, it would be as if we should turn around and the same text amendment say, if we're going to allow an accessory dwelling unit on a piece of property in the urban service district, then we would demand that once that accessory dwelling unit got built, then the entire project, the original house in the ADU would have to connect to sewer and septic. And I think that would be an absurd comment to even suggest, and it certainly would not come anywhere near to meeting a comprehensive plan of trying to add increased density.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Dix. All right, before I open this up to everyone who's excited to make a motion, I will just check around one more time to make sure there's no more discussion from the commissioners? No? All right, I would say, I just wanted to also say for my own part, I would tend to probably lean a little bit more towards Commissioner Powell's, Commissioner Dix, Commissioner Doughty's arguments, the arguments they're making. I understand where Commissioner Caress and obviously where the county's coming from. I think the spirit of the regulation, as has been said before, is right, with the spirit of the policy, I'm sorry, is right. We want to basically move people who aren't on, you know, county water to get them onto county water, but I think that the point that my fellow commissioners are making here, how we go about doing that is extremely key, and it feels like the way that's being suggested to go about it right here probably isn't going to be the best for the citizens. And me personally, I like to think of our organization as representing citizen voices as best we can through our policy. So it seems, I mean, like Commissioner Dix says, like a no-brainer. I mean, you put this out in any community in the county, I doubt the homeowners are going to be like, yeah, we want to pay more for it. I mean, it just, you know, it just seems like a no-brainer. So I definitely lean to their side, but having said that, I will now open the floor up, close discussions, and I will open the floor up and entertain any motions from my fellow commissioners on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to make a motion that we continue the text amendment 20-07202 the next meeting in that we would direct county staff to look at adding in additional language that would account for homeowners that have to connect, that would be forced to connect to a county sewer line that is, that's just not economically feasible, and maybe that's like the right way to put that, but that seems to me the best way.
Okay, so I believe I have a motion to continue item 6B to our next regular meeting from Commissioner Powell, and request that you guys look at adding language dealing with economic feasibility for the homeowners that it could possibly affect.
Correct.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to amend the motion if I could, to suggest that there are three things that I'd like to see when this comes back. One clause that talks about, you know, how existing homeowners, let's say, are grandfathered or could be grandfathered, a clause that deals with hardship, and then criteria that deals with the threshold for when this provision would actually kick in.
All right, I have an amendment to the motion on the floor, adding clauses or adding some information on grandfathering hardship and thresholds for the policy. Do I hear a second on the motion? I see Commissioner Doughty.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, but if Commissioner Green offered that as a friendly amendment, I think Mr. Commissioner Powell has to accept it into his direction.
Commissioner Powell?
Um, no, I don't have a, I would be happy to accept that.
Okay. All right.
Then I can take the motion.
Oh, we can't hear you. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, that should be accepted by the person who seconded the motion as well.
Nobody seconded it, yeah.
Yeah, there's no second. Just, okay. Does the amendment have to be seconded?
No. If the motion hasn't been seconded, then it can be, it either, it's either going to fail for lack of a second, or it can be amended and seconded.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Powell amended by Commissioner Green accepted. The amendments have been accepted by Commissioner Powell. So now I am looking for a second of the amended motion on the floor.
I'll second.
I have a second of the motion on the floor by Commissioner Doughty. So I have a motion by Commissioner Powell amended by Commissioner Green and seconded by Commissioner Doughty. Are there any further questions or discussion on all of this? Seeing none, I will ask that the clerk take a roll call vote on this item.
Joseph?
Aye.
Bernstein?
Aye.
Cardenas?
Aye.
Dix?
Aye.
Doughty?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Press?
Yes.
Marino?
Aye.
Powell?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero.
Thank you. All right. Now we will move on to our next one, 6C, 20-0723.
Thank you, commissioners. The next text amendment is... The next text amendment is LEC twenty oh seven twenty-three, additional information related to transportation in general site plans for plan developments. Purpose is to require additional information related to transportation in plan development site plans submitted for applications. Information will be required in general plan development site plans at the time of application submittal. For plan development, major modifications and minor modifications. Identification of cross-access connectivity opportunities to nearby sites and parcels surrounding the proposed PD districts in the context of the overall roadway network in the area will be required. Alternative designs consideration to these requirements will be required to submit a plan development variation request in accordance with the Land Development Code, section five oh three oh six, C six. That section of the code deals with PD variations for site design. And I'm available for questions, um, if you have any.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Monsanto. I will open it up to questions from the public. Don't see any hands raised. All right. Uh, my commissioners, do you have any comments or questions on this item? See, I see Commissioner Kress, yes.
Just had a question about transit connectivity. Is that automatically assumed to be part of this, or is this not the right place for it?
When you say transit connectivity, you mean access to transit?
Yes.
I believe, no, not in this case. This would deal with information related to cross-access connectivity, um, access points and circulation internal to the PD and how it relates to the, uh, outside context. For circulation. The code currently has provisions for transit, um, provided on plan developments, um, today in the land development code.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kress. Commissioner Green.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Israel, I just had a question. Now, what, what, what type of transportation information specifically? Uh, I mean, other than what you're showing or suggesting here, now, does this, I mean, does, does this suggest that for any PD that someone has to do a traffic analysis?
When you have a plan development, uh, submittal or, or major modifications, you, you have to provide traffic analysis, and there are criteria and thresholds in the Land Development Code when an applicant needs to provide traffic analysis, access, site analysis, and so on. This particular.
And is that based on the, the, you know, size of the project of the PD or, or, or?
Yeah, right. Usually depends on the type of uses, um, number of residential units or, or intensity, uh, square footage, FAR being requested. So that's when you have those type of documentation and analysis need to be provided by the applicant. Um. Right.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Were there any more comments or questions? Commissioner Powell.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Israel, how does, how would this amendment affect, um, developments that already, you know, let's say they already have, um, like streets, uh, stubouts, but they are unbuilt right now? Am I clear and, and, or right in, in understanding that this is now gonna, uh, would, would require a developer to actually not just account for that cross-access, but they're gonna have to then connect into that cross-access, um, you know, property uh, with their new development. Um, because I know that there's been some situations where new development was going into an adjoining neighborhood and that adjoining neighborhood did not want, um, you know, the, uh, cross-access coming into, you know, to their, into their neighborhood, you know, due to the fear increased traffic and, you know, things like that. So is this, are there other developments that, you know, are grandfathered into where that wouldn't happen? Or is this basically like the spirit of this is to know, we're gonna, you know, that connection's gonna be made and it's gonna be identified and everyone's just gonna have to live with it.
Well, if, if you have, if you have a, a, a project that has today stubout, um, to those site limits or property lines, and you have an adjacent site that's, that is coming for a new plan development rezoning, they will have to, per this, per this text change, that information needs to be noted on the PD plan to continue that network of roads from around the site to be noted on the PD plans. The code today, actually, there is a section in the code, section six oh four, that requires connectivity to existing stubouts when a site is being developed for either, for a subdivision, for example. Even if you have a standard zone in districts that is not developed today, and they, and the developer decides to develop it, there is a section in the code for transportation and site, uh, subdivision that if the adjacent site has a stubout to the property line, the proposed neighborhood will have to continue that street network. But this PD, what this text amendment is doing is that when you submit an application, your site plan is to show those, um, details. The detail needs to be indicated on the plans, providing for that continuation of the overall network of the surrounding projects. Uh, it's a requirement today in the Land Development Code. So this is not a new requirement for, for connectivity purposes. It's just a new requirement that that information that's requiring the, that, let me go back, that requirement that's today in the Land Development Code needs to be noted and indicated in the drawings in the plan development, uh, plans submittal. Do I explain myself?
Well, I guess I'm just not clear on whether or not this is just mainly, if this is gonna just require, um, a developer to just note it on their plans, you know, or if it's going to not only make them noted on their plans, but it's also going to then make them, you know, actually, you know, provide that connectivity. I guess it's really.
That's correct. That's, that's, okay, yes. The answer will be yes. They will have to note it on the plan because that, what that means is that that connectivity will have to happen when that PD is approved and that project is built, that connectivity will have to happen.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Right. Commissioner Green.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Israel, uh, I, I think this, 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 this amendment, is it primarily, um, oriented towards site access, uh, that, that type of connectivity, or is it, um, um, or is it actually encouraging internal connectivity with adjacent, uh, adjacent properties?
This, again, the information that needs to be shown on the plan, because what happens is that there are some instances that you have a PD plan or major modification plan application, and an applicant submits the plan, and there is no clear information on how the internal circulation will, will work in relationship to the road network outside. And what is this, what this is, the intent of this is to for the PD plans to show the proposed circulation and site access points in context with the surrounding and make sure that it's logical, in, in, ensure, ensure that what they are showing, where they're placing those connection points and access points make sense in the, in the context of where this is being proposed. And again, the code today requires connectivity and circulation and, 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 and access points location on roads and in context with the surrounding road network. So that's requiring the code. What this is doing is that the applicant will have to show and locate those connection points in accordance with the uh, Land Development Code requirements for where those needs to be located, but they need to be specifically and clearly shown on the submittal in the PD plans.
Okay. I guess the other, the other question I had, I have two. If we're talking about, you know, uh, connectivity from a public right-of-way, now, depending on who owns that right-of-way, of course, they, you know, they'd have, they have different criteria. If you're trying to put a access point, you know, within a couple hundred feet of an intersection that has a, a traffic light, you know, I don't, I don't, you know, I think you run into problems there, um, um, uh, for either commercial or, or residential, you know, uh, projects. So I, I, I guess what I'm getting at is, is, is I, I, I see this as having two, two, two purposes, um, or addressing two, 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 two different types of connect, connectivity issues, let's say, one externally, um, that is from a public right-of-way, and then, um, what, uh, Commissioner Powell alluded to a moment ago about internal circuit, uh, internal connectivity where, um, you know, somebody may or may not be trying to connect from one subdivision to another, um, um. I just, but I, again, I just think, I think it needs to be, needs to be, be, be clear on either, on either, either instance, uh.
Well, yes, and in, in the, in the text, in the text changes that you have in the backup, that information is, is, is stated, and that information comes from, from that section of the code that I mentioned it earlier for cross-access and connectivity, uh, for, for subdivisions and, and, and projects to be, which is required. So this is, the information there is, is put in here in that, in this section in the code in five oh three, um, to be shown on the PD plan. So is, is, is what's required today in the Land Development Code for connectivity? So that example that you gave, you place an access point certain distance from an intersection, they have to show it in accordance with the requirements in section six oh four.
Okay.
And at, at the same time, if the project on, let's say, on the opposite side abuts a, another subdivision which is existent, and he has a stubout, per code, again, the current Land Development Code will require that connectivity to happen and to connect to extend that, that road. So they will have to show on the plan, uh, detail, either a, a, an arrow or, or, or indication that that connectivity is going to be happening and extending and connecting to that subdivision, uh, adjacent to the proposed project. Yes.
Okay. Um, Melissa, can I ask you a question? Now, does, I, I see this as having, um, um, let's say, a, a, a lot more applicability to, to, uh, commercial, um, uh, development. The way we build along commercial corridors, of course, you know, we have, we have adjacent parking lots, uh, between commercial establishments, let's say. Now, is this intended to encourage, you know, uh, access, uh, from one parking lot to another? Um, um, uh, you know, so there's, so, so it minimizes the, the amount of, 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 of in and out, uh, sort of, you know, uh, turning and, and, and maneuvering, let's say?
Well, yes, the county does have access management and cross-access requirements today that require, um, those connections between adjacent commercial parcels. What this would do is it ensures that when they, when, when the new PD site plan or a modification to their site plan comes in, that they show those access points on the site plan so that we can ensure pretty early in the process that things are lining up so that there are no surprises to adjacent properties who see the zoning sign and see, uh, look at what's online about their zoning and maybe don't realize that that is going to be a requirement of the code. So that's what this is really getting at, is, is making sure that all of those existing requirements are shown on the site plans at the PD rezoning stage so that they, so that the public, adjacent property owners have transparency, and also so that staff is clear that if there is some sort of conflict where the, the access points would go like this, we can say, nope, you need to go like this. That type of issue can be addressed early in the process.
Okay. And, and what about the, the, the number of permitted curb cuts?
So that would be addressed in a different section of the code. There is an entire section on access management about curb cuts and cross cuts. But that's not being modified with this.
Okay, good. Thank you.
And, and to add to that point too, thanks Melissa, is that this also would allow, uh, provide the opportunity when a site has, uh, several frontages surrounded by different roads or arterial or collectors to see and explore the opportunities to have connections to allow for different options when to get on a collector or, or different roads and not only have a big project with maybe one single point where the, you know, you could have the opportunity to have different connections in, in different areas, uh, surrounding the project early in the process.
All right.
Okay.
You have any, any more questions, Commissioner Green, or?
That's it. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Doughty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I guess I've heard a couple of things. I, I get it if there are existing connections from adjacent parcels that you want to see in a PD plan, the connections to those existing uh, cross-access points. But I've also heard, uh, identification, well, and I'm reading it, that the identification of cross-access and connectivity opportunities to surrounding sites and parcels in the context of the overall roadway network and making sure basically that, that it makes sense. So you don't have somebody proposing a stubout road, and there is a wetland on the property immediately adjacent, uh, to where they're proposing that stubout, um, et cetera. So, uh, and I think, so i- is this, is this requirement requiring, I guess, a little bit more, uh, of a transportation analysis at the early stage of a PD to make sure that, like all the things Commissioner Green were talking about, that, that the spacing from intersections, the spacing from connections to any particular county road, uh, will actually make sense, and that the, the cross-access that you are proposing in your PD doesn't, uh, negate, or negates is the wrong word, doesn't, uh, minimize, I guess, the development potential of the parcel next door because you're cutting off half of their property by telling them, your neighbor, that they're gonna have to build a road in this position, uh, to do so. I, this is, this was one of the questions. I mean, I know the county has, uh, cross-access rules in the code today, but this was one of the, one of the concerns I had when they added those rules, uh, to the code is, are, are the neighboring property owners who may not be, uh, savvy or whatever, actually being, uh, potentially injured by, uh, some of, some of this requirement. I, uh, I guess I like the idea of having it have to be a, a, some, some more study in the early stages to show that the proposed connectivity works, one, uh, but then that adjacent property owner gets notified when the PD is coming, so they have the opportunity if they don't, uh, if they don't respond. I mean, that's, that's just the nature of our world, I guess. Um, so yeah, Melissa, I see your, what the comment.
Yeah, I thi- I think you're absolutely right, that by getting the information clearly on the site plan early on, that allows the transportation folks to look at it and analyze it early. It, nothing about this, as I understand it, negates the opportunity for the applicant to ask to waive a connection requirement if they, um, as part of their application, if they have supporting facts, um, regarding that. Um, but this simply has them show those requirements that would be coming later down the pike, have them show it on the site plan at the time that they're coming in for their rezoning or their major modification.
Great. And then, I mean, does this, there's no reason for anybody to, to, you said, there's nothing that says the applicant can't ask to waive the requirement. I, I, what I'm kind of getting at is, does it, does it make the private subdivision disappear? The private gated, the private gated subdivision that has to have cross-access to the neighboring parcel. How, how does that work?
No, that, that would still be, well, I mean, I should let Israel answer that, but my understanding is that none of this would change the ability for somebody to ask for private roads and.
Right, right, right. You, you still have, you know, developer still have the. Right, right, right. You, you still have, you know, developer still have the, the ability to propose private roads. They will still have to comply with emergency access requirements for the number of units and so on. They, they will have to make criteria for the, uh, gated, um, facilities and how to, you know, provide that connections. They still have to meet all those standards. This is not preventing that from happening.
All right. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Doughty. Were there any more comments or questions on this one? Many of the commissioners? No? All right. Well, seeing none, I will go ahead and open the floor up to motions for this item.
Uh, this is Commissioner Crass. I can make a motion that LDC twenty zero two, three is consistent with the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan.
I think we've got a motion for consistency by Commissioner Crass. Commissioner Bernstein?
I'll second that motion.
All right. A second by Commissioner Bernstein. It's a motion by Commissioner Crass, consistency, second by Commissioner Bernstein. I'll ask the clerk to go on ahead and take the roll call vote at this time. Oh, wait, uh, any more discussions? Am I out or?
See any, any public comment or anything, we should be good.
Okay. Clerk, if you could please go on ahead and take the vote on this one.
Joseph?
Aye.
Bernstein?
Aye.
Cardenas?
Aye.
Dix?
Aye.
Doughty?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Crass?
Yes.
Moreno?
Aye.
Powell?
Aye.
Motion carried nine to zero.
Thank you. All right. Onto our next one, twenty dash oh seven two four.
Commissioners, this text amendment, um, the purpose is to expand the number of roadways from class five to six on which vehicular and or pedestrian cross access may be required. This text amendment, uh, was, um, is being handled by our transportation staff section. And the expansion of the, of the application of cross access requirements to class six roadways so that cross access is required for projects on all collectors and arterial roadways when specified conditions are met. And this, again, this, this text amendment, um, the intent is to add, uh, an additional classification, which is, uh, six, uh, to be included in the cross access requirements. And I'm have, I will be available if you have any, uh, general question on this.
Thank you, Mr. Monsanto. I don't see any hands raised in our audience, which seems to be shrinking, but, Commissioner Powell, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this really kind of almost correlates with what we were just talking about, but, um, there was a development that was being proposed, like in the brand new Riverview area, right, like on Bloomingdale and Gorento Lake. There was going to be like an apartment community, um, that was going to be coming in there. And I think that it had initially got shut down and then it came back before the BOCC and then it was ultimately approved. And one of the big issues that the, there was a landowner that, a land that fronted the, uh, that fronted on Gorento Lake as commercial. And the development services was requiring at that time, a stubout to be depicted on the site map, uh, in a requirement. And that adjoining landowner was, you know, really concerned that, how that was going to affect, you know, his parcel. Uh, and Commissioner White spent a good deal of time ensuring, uh, you know, with development services that whenever he sold his piece of property or he, you know, maybe self-developed that parcel, that he was not, there was not going to be a requirement placed upon him at any point in time that he was going to have to allow a road to come through his piece of par- uh, through his parcel that would potentially, you know, jeopardize whatever development, you know, was going to happen there. And to me, not just using one example, but recalling this, that seems like with this text amendment, that would actually make that to be a requirement. Um, to where they, you know, if it's, you know, um, if it's there, you know, it's on a site map that it's going to have to, you know, be done. And, um, am I, am I wrong in that thought?
I am not, I'm not sure, I'm not familiar with that plan development or rezoning. But just, just to go back to this text, this, right now, the, the code has seven class ro- of roadways. He has, he goes one through seven. And class seven is a subdivision or local roads. The code today was only requiring connection to, to class one through five. And this text amendment is just adding class six, which is, um, another class of roads, which will go from interstates to collectors and arterial. So this is what this code is doing. It's just to add that class six for projects to connect. Regardless of whether they're in a PD process or not, this is any project that comes from site. They have to analyze the connections for those type of, uh, of roads, classes one through, through six, because today the code only required up to five and then, but we have seven different classes. So this is just adding that class six, um, for those requirements. And this is connecting to adjacent roads, not to adjacent parcels or, or sites.
Ri- right. But I mean, just in like that example that I'm talking about, I'm sure that how I, how I'm reading this, um, you know, that that would, that it just like makes that a requirement now. So is it, would, let me set, would this only apply to future development? So if something's already been approved and is there like a grandfathering in, um, where, you know, an arterial roadway, um, can't go through or, you know, do you see what I'm trying to say?
Typically what happens is that if you have, uh, a, an open permit and you are going through site review at this moment, then this goes when this is approved. Well, you already are in the process of, of your, of your site development. But if this is adopted, any new development will have to be subject to these regulations.
Okay. Uh, well, I'm interested to hear what some of the other commissioners have to say, but not sure if I'm too inclined to agree, but thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Is there any more input from any of the other commissioners? Is everybody just a moment here? No? All right. Well, then I will go on ahead and close discussion on this item and entertain any motions from the commissioners on this item sixty twenty dash oh seven two four. Commissioner Crass?
Happy to make a motion that LDC twenty zero seven two four is consistent with the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan.
Second. All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Crass for consistency and a second by Commissioner Green. Is there any more discussion on this item from the commissioners? All right. Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and take the roll call vote for this item.
Joseph?
Aye.
Bernstein?
Aye.
Cardenas?
Aye.
Dix?
Aye.
Doughty?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Crass?
Yes.
Moreno?
Aye.
Powell?
No.
Motion carried eight to one. Commissioner Powell voted no.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Onto our next one, twenty dash oh eight four two.
Commissioners, this text amendment, it's, the purpose is to clarify additional emergency access connections within all plan development districts without requiring a rezoning modification. Recently, only subdivisions on plan development are eligible to add emergency access without a modification to approved general site plans. And with this text amendment, this will clarify that other type of developments, zone plan development, for example, non-residential, multifamily apartments are permitted. They could add an emergency access connections outside the zoning modification process. Um, and this will provide same design standard for emergency access ways found in the subdivision portion, portion of our land development code. And I am available if you have any questions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Monsanto. Are there any hands raised in the audience? I don't see anybody from the audience. Can't say anything. All right. Any comments or questions from commissioners? I'm not seeing anyone pop up. All right. Seeing no questions from commissioners, I will close public comment now and open up the floor to any. Anyone want to make a motion? The floor is open to motions. Commissioner Crass?
I'd like to move that LDC twenty zero eight four two is consistent with the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Crass. We have a second anywhere out there.
I'll second.
Oh. Who was that? Doughty? Yeah. All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Crass, consistency and a second by Commissioner Doughty. Is there any more discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll ask the clerk to go on ahead and take the roll call vote.
Joseph?
Aye.
Bernstein?
Aye.
Cardenas?
Aye.
Dix?
Aye.
Doughty?
Aye.
Green? Green? Is it green? Crass?
Yes.
Moreno?
Aye.
Powell?
Aye.
And one more time, Green? Motion carried eight to zero.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to the next one, twenty dash eight fifty five.
Commissioners, uh, LDC twenty oh five, oh eight fifty five, backyard chickens. The purpose of this text amendment is to allow backyard chickens on residentially zoned lots. Uh, this will permit the keeping of chickens on parcels on residential and occupied by single family and two-family homes. No more than five she- uh, hens will be allowed. Rooster will be prohibited. Chickens will be kept in enclosed coops all the times in the rear yard. There are being restrictions imposed on height and the size of the coop. On-site slaughtering and sale of eggs will be prohibited and variances to all these regulations will not be allowed. A new section of the land development code, six eleven one twenty nine, will be created for the standards of review and approval uh, as, uh, for backyard chickens as a conditional use permit. Um, Mr. Tom Hisnay of Development Services is, is present here if you have any question, uh, in case he needs to answer any question. And we're ready to answer it. Thank you.
Mr. Monsanto. I, again, don't see anybody in the audience. You have no one. All right. Commissioners, I see Commissioner Dix. Yes.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just had a question. It, it was, it will perhaps sound silly, but it's not. You know, I grew up in an Aurora area. Why, why do we prohibit roosters but allow hens?
Uh, it has to do with, uh, noise nuisance and also the fact that you are limiting the number of hens to five and you don't want to have a number of chickens going up and then having all those, uh, chickens running. Uh, but the number that, the main purpose of noise nuisance and, and avoid, um, the number of chickens to get out of control.
I get it. I, I, thank you. No, nothing finer than a good rooster in the morning, though.
Thank you, Commissioner Dix. Uh, are there any more comments from, uh, Commissioner Crass?
I'm not a chicken owner. However, um, I don't see why someone can't put a little sign up in their front yard that says eggs for sale. When I was doing the review of this, I thought it said that you had to get a business permit to do that, which seems kind of like a stretch to me. Just similar to selling some excess produce from your garden on a little table in your front yard. It just seems like it goes a little too far. And then I'm not exactly sure why people can't let chickens kind of free range in their backyard. Why they have to be in their enclosure the entire time. Seems like it'd be a personal decision to me. So just kind of curious why those things were in place.
If Tom, I mean, Tom may, may, may help us with that question because he has been working with this text amendment from a long time ago. Hey, Tom?
Yeah, hi. Uh, Tom Hisnay. Um, yeah, on the, uh, the, with regards to letting the chickens run all around the backyard. Again, we're, we're introducing a use into residential areas often with, you know, relatively small lots that have been historically prohibited in the county. And, you know, we're very concerned about, uh, adverse impacts that would be posed by noise, such as why roosters are prohibited. But also the impact it would be posed by, and enforcement problems that are posed by roosters getting loose and running around the neighborhood. Uh, you know, this would definitely be a nuisance to neighbors as well as an enforcement problem. Uh, and so that's why we have the rule about restricting them to a coop with a maximum size. Um, as far as, you know, on-site sale of eggs, that actually, uh, i- if it were to be permitted, would require approval of a home-based business permit. Uh, but we felt that it would be better to prohibit it altogether. Because in general, our home-based business permit rules, in fact, I'm, I'm not certain it could even be approved as that because generally speaking, onsite sales are prohibited, uh, for home-based businesses in residential areas. No matter what you're selling. And the reason being is that, you know, if something becomes very popular, then it uh, could, uh, create traffic coming into a neighborhood, which is contrary to the general intent of our home-based business regulations, which is that businesses are permitted, uh, that are, uh, very benign. As far as any kind of impact on the neighborhood, to the extent that you may not even know there's a business operating in its courts. So those are the reasons we have those restrictions in place in this amendment.
Right. Any more? I guess that was it from Commissioner Crass. Commissioner Powell, I recognize.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, will this, uh, allow for, um, say like master plan, uh, subdivisions, you know, such as, um, you know, ones that have like a really, you know, tight lot lines? Um, or really not a whole lot of, you know, backyards. Is this going to apply just, you know, blanket to all, um, you know, communities and, 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 and homes? Or, um, can master plan, you know, communities within like, you know, or their zone with the PD? Can they, can they have those, um, not be allowed? Or does this say, no, you can't, you, you, you can't have a prohibition against chickens? Because I, for example, if I want to have a chicken coop next to my house, I mean, I already live, you know, I live in Winthrop and we have really, you know, we're all really close together to begin with. And, oh, man, those of us who have kids and I know that, uh, the, the hen is not as loud as the rooster, but they can cackle.
Uh, yes, um, on that point, um, the, the regulation here is drafted to where it would only be permitted on lots with a detached, single-family home or a duplex home. So if you're in a townhome development, then you would not, this regulation would not allow you to keep, uh, chickens. Uh, as far as, uh, yes, it would apply to all residential zones in the districts, uh, subject to these requirements, which would include the PD. Uh, however, and this was brought up by Mr. Belcher, uh, in a manner in our last, uh, meeting before the board, uh, your commission. But this regulation is not going to in any way obviate deed restrictions or covenants that concerning chickens. Um, so, um, very often in PDs, you're going to find that you have homeowners association because there's common areas that need. because there's common areas that need to be maintained, common amenities, things like that. So if in your community, sir, you have a deed restriction that prohibits the keeping of chickens, then this will not affect that deed restriction. But as always, enforcement of deed restrictions entirely the responsibility, the HOA, and that's always been the case or been the case. So, yes, it won't obviate deed restrictions, but unless the condition of a PD specifically addresses the keeping of chickens, as far as county's own regulations go, then, yeah, they would be permitted in PD.
Okay, and my last question, I think I may have raised this when this initially came up, but how do, I don't think this accounts for any sort of consideration, you know, if these, you know, chickens all of a sudden start to, you know, become a nuisance or they are starting to, you know, allow to, you know, be free range, you know, so to speak. Who handles that? You know, I mean, is that like code enforcement? I mean, I can't imagine the police are going to call that to.
No, no.
Okay. All right, well, I'm curious to hear what other people say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Green, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, this reminds me of conversation we had a couple of years ago related to chickens in the city of Tampa. But I just have a couple of questions for Tom. So, so one, there is no, there is no requirement for any fencing? And, and I know chickens, some people say, well, chickens, they, you know, they don't fly, but, but they actually do. But, but, but still, this, this doesn't mention any requirement for, for any type of fencing?
No, sir, it does require them to be in a fully enclosed coop at all times.
Just, just the.
Is one hundred fifty square feet, but no, it does not require that the, it also requires that they be located in the rear yard, but no, it does not require that the rear yard be additionally fenced.
Okay, and, and this, this is more or less a comment because I grew up in an area where wasn't too rural, but there were free-range chickens, and they were often slaughtered right there. How do you, how do you deal with that situation?
Well, they have proposed amendments specifically prohibits the onsite slaughtering of chickens.
Okay.
Yes. Deal with suburban sensibility.
Okay, good luck with that one. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. More questions from commissioners? I don't see anyone else popping up. I did have one question for you, Mr. Hisnay, before you go. That onsite slaughtering and egg sales prohibited, that's obviously a statement on industry, right? You're talking about there is no commercial slaughtering, no commercial sales. But I think kind of what Commissioner Green was alluding to was the smaller, more cottage, I guess, local industry that takes place that's not necessarily regulated, right, by our commerce industries. This regulation, this, my question is very specific, this regulation doesn't speak to those cottage industries, does it?
Oh, no, yes, sir, it does. It prohibits the onsite sales entirely, and it also prohibits the onsite slaughtering entirely.
Okay, so you.
Size of the business or not.
Okay, so even if you don't have a registered business, you aren't allowed to slaughter your chickens in your yard for any reason, is what this is saying then. Correct. Thank you very much. All right. And with that, we have no more, looks like, comments from commissioners. So I will go ahead and close public comments and entertain any motions from my commissioners. Anyone?
Mr. Chairman. Okay, I'll go ahead and make this, make the motion to find LDC twenty dash zero eight five five consistent with the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan.
Motion by Commissioner Green. I see Commissioner, I saw Commissioner Press first, so I'll go to her first.
Second, thank you.
All right, I have a second by Commissioner Press. Motion by Commissioner Green for consistency. Is there any more discussion from any of the commissioners? Seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Joseph.
Nay.
Bernstein.
Hi.
Cardenas.
Hi.
Dix.
Hi.
Doughty.
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Press.
Yes.
Marino.
Hi.
Powell.
No.
Motion carried seven to two, Commissioners Joseph and Powell voted no.
Thank you very much. All right, on to our next item, twenty dash oh eight five six.
Thank you, Commissioners. LDC twenty zero eight five six. The purpose of this text amendment is to add a provision to toll the calculation of the six-month timeframe limit for an application to be heard at a public hearing in the event the public hearing is canceled by the county during that six-month period. This would allow to pause the calculation of the six-month period when a public hearing is canceled due to closures by the county during emergency events. Once a public hearing is scheduled again, the calculation of time for that six-month deadline for an application will resume at the next available public hearing. This, this section also is being amended to utilize letters instead of numbers for subsections, which is consistent with other parts of our code. Commissioners, this is the last code that we are hearing today, and we are available if you have any questions.
Right, thank you, Mr. Monsanto. Any, whoop, whoop, public comment? Anybody in the public? I see no hands raised on this one. Nothing from you, Melissa? All right, my commissioners, I will open it up to the commissioners for any comments or questions on this item. Just a moment here. CEO, oh, that was Commissioner Monsanto. Seeing no questions or comments from commissioners, I will go ahead and close public comments and ask the clerk to take a vote.
Do we have a motion in a second?
Oh, sorry about that, I'm ready to get done. I'll open it up to motions from the commissioners on this item.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Bernstein.
I would, I would move that we find LDC twenty dash oh eight five six consistent with the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Right, we have a motion of consistency from Commissioner Bernstein and a second by Commissioner Green. Any more comments, questions from commissioners? All right, I will ask the clerk to go ahead and take a roll call vote.
Joseph.
Hi.
Bernstein.
Hi.
Cardenas.
Hi.
Dix.
Hi.
Doughty.
Hi.
Green.
Hi.
Press.
Yes.
Marino.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero.
Right. And that looks like off from Mr. Monsanto and Ms. Mills. Thank you both very much for your hard work on those. Thank you. And we are moving on to item number seven, the discussion of the executive director's evaluation. Ms. Zornita.
Yes, good, good afternoon, Commissioners, Melissa Zornita, Executive Director. What I presented in this agenda item was based on some direction that you gave back in March. Speaking of losing track of time, it's been a little while since we've discussed this. And the, what the, at that time, the direction was that we can form some section of the executive director evaluation to the strategic plan. So in the, in the current evaluation, there is a section on attainment of strategic plan goals, and there were four goals that were outlined. Those were out of date from the priorities that are in the existing strategic plan. So previously, it was a goal on education and outreach, on, I'm looking through the straight underline here, customer service, on proactive planning efforts, and then agency performance measures. So what I did was I deleted those four goals and in, as an alternative, added in the eight priorities that are in the strategic plan. And I selected the priority statement and the strategies, not all of the pieces of the strategic plan that detail how we might accomplish those different strategies, but just the ones that, that high level. So it's sort of easier to see in the clean version than what that does is it provides an opportunity to rate on each of the aspects of the strategic plan as part of the attainment of goals section. This is not for action, this is simply to get your feedback to see whether or not I implemented your direction from March correctly. And if you have further direction on how to modify this, I'd happily take that today, and then we would bring back this for action at the September meeting. That's all I had.
All right. I don't see anyone jumping to give you an input here, so.
Okay, well, if there.
Is okay with it.
If there, if there isn't anything, and if you think of something afterwards, I'm happy to have you email me directly if there's anything you would like to change about this. Otherwise, we'll bring it back to the September meeting.
Thank you very much. On to our next item, which is you again, Melissa, executive director's report.
This pretty quickly. So, in, I emailed out earlier today the list of activities and meetings that have been ongoing. Many of them relate to a number of the ongoing projects like the Y-Mama and RP2 land use studies, One Water, which you'll be seeing in just a little bit in the public hearing, things of that nature. So if there are any questions about anything that's on that list, please let me know. Attached to the report that was provided in advance is an update on our contracts, which we will be expecting that a number of them will be getting invoices in the next thirty days before the end of the fiscal year. I will point out that the ones that are listed under county budget allocation, those are in a, in a allotment that they have set aside for us, and those we are allowed to carry forward to the next fiscal year, which is particularly advantageous as it relates to the projects on Y-Mama, RP2, and our Sustainable Growth Outreach Survey, because both of the, or all three of those projects have been delayed given the impacts of COVID and our ability to do public outreach effectively and having to shift to online outreach, which hasn't been quite as successful, and then the moratoriums in particular being extended. So some of the money in those contracts will be carried over to the next fiscal year. So I wanted you all to, to be aware of that. The other item that we wanted to bring up, Tracy, I believe, will also be chiming in. But as Tracy made you aware of, I believe, last month, the Planning Commission is, is the subject of a lawsuit in conjunction with Hillsborough County. It is the, a suit in which Mr. Robin has conflict in representing the Planning Commission in handling this litigation. And so we're pursuing getting outside counsel. And maybe at this point, I would turn it over to Tracy to, if you'd like to, to explain what you've been looking at in that regard.
Okay, thank you. Well, quite frankly, I'm not qualified to handle the litigation in this matter and would not have been doing so in any event, just to clarify the record on that. The, the, excuse me, the agency has not been served yet with the summons in the case. So there's no timeline ticking in terms of legal procedure. I have, however, been talking with and soliciting some opinions, if you will, from other lawyers about lawyers who are qualified in this area and who would be suitable for the Planning Commission to retain to defend a, a piece of land use litigation, in this case involving a constitutional claim. I have not come to any conclusions yet about the identification of my, my recommendation. I'm kind of looking to the board for some direction, perhaps to authorize Melissa and I to select a lawyer and engage that lawyer, retain them, if you will, for this, for this specific purpose. Because we may well be served between now and the next meeting and need for the agency to have counsel on board. I'm also look, being, trying to be cognizant of the, the costs that are involved, and will be looking to get a so-called government rate from the firm that the agency ultimately engages in order to help manage that cost. But the, the primary focus is to find the right lawyer with the skills that are needed to defend this suit. Now, Melissa and I have talked about the potential impact of this type of an event on the agency's budget. I suggested to Melissa that since we're at the end of the year, that it might be useful if she has a budget surplus at the end of the year this year to use that budget surplus to fund a retainer with, with the law firm. That would allow, of course, for those of you who aren't familiar with retainers, the client would deposit funds with the, in the trust account of the law firm to be drawn on, instead of paying monthly when you receive a bill. We would still receive bills, they would still be subject to approval, but the law firm would have funds on hand to draw on, to pay itself as those, those invoices are approved. And it would allow Melissa to move funds out of her 2020 budget from any surpluses that might be available, so that it wouldn't impact the 2021 budget. Otherwise, there's, there's no downside to, to posting a retainer. It's kind of like a security deposit, if you want to view it that way. And the, the firm would provide the defense services on, on as needed, as required basis with, at the direction of Melissa and I probably in most cases, because various hearings and other events that come up in the litigation may come up between meetings. They don't, we, we would bring to you anything that required board approval, of course. But strategically, in the case, I would expect to have some involvement with, at least from an approval standpoint, of the strategy that the, the outside independent counsel selected and also working with Melissa and making sure that she was understanding and found the, the strategic approach to be acceptable.
And I.
I'm certainly open for questions. And Melissa, I'll turn it back to you.
Sure, I just wanted to, to add that certainly from a budgetary aspect, this year's operating budget has been down in terms of expenses due to things like. in terms of expenses due to things like limits on travel, reductions in printing, because we're all working remotely, things of that nature, that certainly it would be advantageous to take advantage of that portion of our operating budget and not impact the next year's operating budget quite as, as much as it might otherwise.
Commissioner Dix?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a couple of questions. Let me say this first, Tracy. I, I have found you to be a wonderful of counsel to the board. I mean, you're very knowledgeable. You've done this a long time. You're very adept and very collegial in, in dealing with folks. I, I say that to you because I also respect the fact that, you know, when these kinds of situations arise, when the board is being sued, you know, they're very unfortunate. I think all of us were disappointed to hear that news. But I know that on other boards that I've served on, I mean, for the Board of Trustees at Hillsborough Community College, and when I was mayor out at Plant City, you know, we do get into lawsuits from time to time. And in each case, you know, we had, we had a board of counsel, or in the cases of the city, we had a full-time city commissioner, I mean, city attorney. But we did, you know, go ahead and seek outside counsel just because of the expertise of the situation that was, that was entailed, and I respect your opinion on that. I do want to kind of get a little bit of clearance, though, just to make certain understand, because I thought I heard Melissa say that you may have a conflict, and I thought I heard you say that you would be engaged in finding that counsel and working with that counsel. I'm, I'm hopeful that what that really means is, regardless of any potential conflicts out there, that you would still be able to do the case management, still be able to be engaged and kind of brief us as to the progress of, of this matter. Is that, is that correct? Then I got one more question.
I, I would expect to do that. I would not expect to have any involvement other than oversight, if you want to call it, as general counsel to the agency to make sure that I felt that the, the counsel that was retained was doing everything that needed to be done in the best interest of the agency. But I wouldn't expect to play any role, any direct role in the litigation. We, I, I've given up my litigation practice some years ago. And I, I no longer, and this was not an area of my expertise in any event. So yes, I, I think I can answer your question fairly that way.
So you'd be giving oversight. Probably that was a bad choice of words when I say case management, because I didn't mean to get involved in the, in the weeds in the day-to-day.
I would be reporting back to the board on periodic basis on a status.
Right. And, and Melissa, I know there's no way of knowing at this point how much you may have in the 2020 budget that you could even allocate, allocate to that. I guess you do have, you do have a threshold that you can authorize. It's 25, 35,000, something like that. I mean, are you anticipating wanting the board to, to kind of come up with an amount, which would be hard for us to come up with, I think? Are you wanting to stay within that threshold? What are you thinking there?
Yeah, I think my thought was staying within the $35,000 threshold that is authorized today. And then if, if it looks like in the next fiscal year, at, at some point as this progresses, that we're exceeding that, Tracy and I would be back in, in front of you all to discuss that. But that was, I anticipate that we would have about that, you know, in that, that round number amount in the operating budget going into September with anticipated bills and purchases that we've made.
Okay. Thanks, thanks for clearing that up. And again, it's unfortunate that we have to do it, but I, I, I respect the way y'all are heading. And I certainly don't want to monopolize the conversation. I mean, Steve Bernstein, also, you're a lawyer on here, so please give us your insight as well. But I had those two questions as they popped up. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dix.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Bernstein, and thank you, Tracy, for guiding us through this and also, you know, recognizing where, you know, reinforcements may be needed. You obviously have a couple lawyers on the commission, and it's outside of my realm of expertise as well. But, you know, to the extent I can lend a hand, an input into, you know, whatever selections make the final cut, don't hesitate to lean on me for that. I'm happy to help.
Be glad to. Would appreciate your help.
It'd be my pleasure.
Right. More questions or input from any of our other commissioners?
Okay, if there, if there aren't any objections, then we will move forward with, with Tracy and I looking to select somebody to assist in this matter. And if possible, utilizing up to the 35,000 that I'm eligible to, to, to do as a procurement out of this year's budget.
For retainer purposes.
Right, for retainer purposes, exactly.
Sounds good.
Thank you. I think that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to our last item of the day, number nine, other business, chairs business. I have none. Old business. Anyone? New business? Anyone? No. Committee reports. There we have some committee reports. Commissioner Rodriguez, hello.
Good afternoon, folks. Wanted to report on the city's Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. They have not had a meeting since February, so we did have a lot to cover in our, our, our last month's meeting here on 15 July. So far, due to COVID, the city housing and community development staff has just been very busy on a lot of fronts. The city's received $6.3 million in CARESAC funding. One of the really neat projects that they did was Hillsborough Hope, which was temporary shelter for the homeless. They had that up and running for 60 days. And they served 210 individuals. There were no known positive COVID-19 cases in the group that, that they were serving. Also, there's the One Tampa Program, and that provided rent mortgage assistance and utilities to individuals, families, and small businesses. They, they processed over 1,400 applications for individuals and families and over 215 small businesses. And just quickly, I, I wanted to cover some of the affordable housing production that's been going on with the city of Tampa. Last year, we discussed the city's very ambitious program to use some of the, the empty lots that the city owned around Tampa. And in a partnership with Domain Homes, Habitat for Humanity, and CDC of East Tampa, they, they constructing and selling homes on those lots, well, they have closed on 71 of those 93 homes already. And some of the production that's going on right now, there are 441 units under development and construction, which will be online within the next year. And that's just, those are, those are programs that have some form of city funding to it. And there's also two developers out there that are putting 100 units of affordable housing on the street in the city of Tampa. So a lot has been happening with, especially since the new administration came on board. And the, the city's become very metric, relevant, and, and watching those things. Some of the things coming up is the city is, they, they are looking to put together a community land trust, whereas a, a third party would own the parcel of land, and then the individuals own the, the, the home on the land. So that's, that's happening. Madison Heights, which is a 100-unit senior housing complex in East Tampa, that, that received the, the 9% tax credit from, from the state of Florida, so that one's moving forward. The Rome Yard, which is adjacent to the West River Development, that's, that's underway. We, the city seeking RFPs on that. And something I, I got to have a little input on, the city would like to put together, in South Tampa, they've got two sites where they would like to provide affordable housing. 50% of that would be occupied by military families. So it would give them the opportunity to, to buy a home very close to the base, which is a, a situation that's really dire in South Tampa right now, is finding quality affordable housing close to the base. A lot of our folks have to live out in Riverview, Y MAMA area, and make that big commute. So this would give the opportunity to, for folks to buy and live a lot closer to the base. We had talked about a tiny homes project before, and that's on Palafox. The city is weighing the options as to whether or not that's going to be a, a rental versus ownership situation due to the, the lot configurations that, that have to be done on the site. And our next meeting will be next Wednesday on 19 August. So that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rodriguez. I think I also saw Commissioner, Commissioner Moreno pop up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be brief. Our, the NPO meeting, they had a discussion on speed management. They actually approved a speed management action plan. And that's actually relevant for our conversation, because we have an item coming up that gets into contact classification, which is obviously critical for bringing down some of these speed limits.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. There any more committee reports out there? There he is. I was expecting one more. Commissioner Powell. Oh, I don't think we can hear you.
Whoops, operator error there. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two committee reports. The first one is for the Public Information Committee. We had a meeting on August the 3rd, and that was held to consider options for this year's 30th Annual Planning and Design Awards. And we've decided to, you know, in light of, you know, COVID and what's going on there, and not knowing our current venue is the the Strass Center, and we are, you know, not sure if they're even going to be open by that time. And then we previously, you know, looked at considering like using the Pepin, but all of those places are still currently closed. We do not know if they're going to be open by the time we would normally hold the awards. So we are going to, and we voted and approved to move to a virtual format, and that just seems to make the most sense for this year. We're going to provide out some more details by September the 1st on how that's going to look in that format. And then the last thing is that we are thrilled to announce that we've received 11 strong early bird entries so far, which that's five more than last year. You know, at this time, and all the entries and the fees are due by August the 25th. And that concludes my report for that. Onto Affordable Housing Advisory Board Report. We did meet this morning, and in fact, one of the big things that was instituted in the last, second to last meeting was the Subcommittee for Land Trust. And the committee, the Subcommittee had asked, which I'm on, you know, asked for a a detailed list from staff on all of the available surplus line, surplus lands that we have. And so we're going to be taking a look at that. We have that list, but we've asked for that to be put onto a map and to provide some additional layers to show, you know, like traffic and, you know, where food and shopping is located and things like that, so that we can kind of get a better idea of where these lands, you know, really are, and where they're all clustered, and see if there's any opportunity for us to either give some of that land, you know, back to real estate services, or maybe we want to keep it, try to sell it, and then focus on other areas, you know, where there might be some available land, you know, for affordable housing projects. And I'm not sure if I probably should have brought this up during new business, but I thought I would wait until the committee report seemed most appropriate. I would like to ask the, you know, board if we could maybe as an agenda item on our next, in our next meeting, you know, to consider potentially developing and putting out an RFP that would look at, you know, studying, and maybe we have the study already, but, you know, look at studying the, I don't want to phrase this right away, you know, studying ways that we can develop affordable housing, you know, a little bit cheaper, you know, through like the land development code. So then that way, we can just try to make projects more feasible, specifically or especially because some of the land that we have already on hand, it's not, it may not be ideal for doing affordable housing projects, you know, based on current code. But if we were able to modify that code, you know, specifically for, you know, just for affordable housing projects, you know, that may, you know, allow us, you know, a better opportunity for, you know, developing on what we already have. So I'd like to, I don't know if I need a motion for that, or is it something we can, you know, just, you know, bring up on discussion? So, Mr. Chair, I'll ask that you consider that and tell me what we would need to do.
All right. Go ahead, Ms. Renata.
I'll weigh in. Because I would just offer that actually Jennifer Malone and Mary Ann Abramson of staff have been working on the update of the housing element. And one of the things that we have talked with Adam Gormley and Cheryl Howell of the County Development Services and Affordable Housing Departments about was looking at hiring a consultant, or perhaps somebody from the university, some, some sort of resource to take an outside look at how our comprehensive plan and probably the land development code kind of going hand in hand might be creating inadvertent impediments to affordable housing, and how our density bonuses could be better utilized to provide more opportunity to efficiently utilize some of that remaining land as you were discussing. So we would be happy to bring something back. I'm not sure whether we would have something for the September meeting, but, but, but certainly in the fall, we were anticipating something in the next budget year. But it would probably have to, I'm not sure whether, we, we got to get together a scope of what it looks like to determine whether, what kind of proposal we'd be seeking. But, but yes, we'd be happy to bring something back. So I don't know whether you need a motion or not, but we'd be happy to do that.
Well, I'm not sure what I need either, but just I think it would be great for us to, you know, at least consider, I thought maybe more of just the next meeting, maybe having a discussion about that. Maybe someone else, you know, other members on the board would like to, you know, chime in on that and add into, you know, that scope. And then something that, you know, staff can come back with, you know, at a later date in the fall. And, you know, we can really flesh that out, but just like to see that.
That's a great idea. We can certainly have a discussion item on next month's agenda. And then utilize that to help formulate the, the scope. That'd be great.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Green?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would, I would echo Commissioner Powell's recommendation. However, I would, I would suggest that it, that it be a much more comprehensive type of study where we're looking, we're looking at all regulatory perceived impediments to, 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 to affordable housing, as well as opportunities to, to modify any of those regulations. Put, put those issues on, on the table for consideration, let's say. It should also look at this relative to what Commissioner Powell's also talking about in terms of available land, whether it's publicly owned land or, you know, whatever, but, but land that would lend itself to, you know, to affordable housing developments, let's say. And then I, I guess the, the other aspect would also be looking at, you know, where, where this land is. And, you know, it's, it's, you know, you know, where, where this land is, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, opportunities for connecting with transportation, you know, jobs, you know, things, things like that. Okay? Now, I, I know, I, I probably suggested a much, a much broader sort of approach than, 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 than was just indicated. But, but, but I, I think if we're going to, if we're going to, if we're going to look at it from a regulatory point of view, we have to sort of, sort of knit together the other pieces that, that go along with that. Okay, in, in, in order for it to make sense, because, you know, we've got, we've got a number of affordable housing committees, you know, at the, you know, at city-county level. And I'm not sure how, you know, what, what type of, of, of database or information resource they're, they're all working from. But it, it needs to be, it needs to be comprehensive, and it, and it, and it needs to say the same thing.
Great, thank you.
All right. So we agreed that you're going to be coming back with an item for us to, to discuss at the next meeting concerning the affordable housing. And just to, I wanted to echo also my commissioners, Mr. Powell and Mr. Green's points. I've obviously been working with staff and speaking with staff a lot about the revisions that are going on with the affordable housing section. I've let Ms. Abramson and also Ms. Malone know that they should be getting in touch with both you, Commissioner Powell, and Commissioner Rodriguez, right? Because both of you guys sit on affordable housing committees to get your input as these things move along and develop. At some future point, I would like for us to have a workshop on it, but staff has a lot going on right now, including with me harassing them, so I've, I've learned to take a step back a little and kind of let things go. But I think at some future point, that may be what you're looking for besides the, obviously, the research by some consultant. But for us to, as commissioners and, you know, the staff working on it, to get in a room, and let's just sit down and talk about where we're going with this thing moving forward, our housing. So I'm hopeful that, you know, as time moves on here and it becomes more appropriate, that that will evolve, that workshop with all of us on housing. All right, so I guess committee reports. So that was all from committees. All our discussion, all business is done. Seeing no one else and no other hands, I am going to adjourn this meeting at five fifty-four. Thank you, everybody, for joining us. We'll see you over on the next channel for the public hearings later on.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll have about ten minutes for the clerk and HTV to switch over.
All right.
Great.